Elizabeth Town Council. Deborah, can we have the roll call?
Yes.
Chairman Lennon?
Here.
Counselor Gouvinale.
Here.
Counselor Jordan?
Here.
Counselor Ray?
Here.
Counselor Sherman?
Here.
Counselor Sullivan?
Here.
And Counselor Walsh?
Here.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Town Council reports and correspondence. Jim?
I'd just like to bring to the council's attention and the general public that we have an ordinance committee meeting on Wednesday morning at 8:00 to address the continuing discussion on short-term rentals. And at that meeting, we'll also discuss with the committee the issue of having -- Feel static in the air. Anyway, I just wanted to put that on the record that we have an ordinance meeting on the day of the call.
Thank you.
Thank you. Paula Welk?
Jessica? First of all, we have two openings on the zoning board of appeals. The Appointments Committee will be meeting on the 17th of January. So if there's anyone that's interested, we have some applicants, but if anyone else would like to apply for this, we're taking applications through Friday, the 13th. They can apply online or in the town hall with the town clerk. And I have one more item. The town had, the council had authorized and hired Demont Associates to conduct a fundraising feasibility study in consideration of a possible library project. That study has been completed, and the final report will be given to the Board of Thomas Memorial Library Board of Trustees and the Foundation Thursday at 7:00 p.m. at the library.
Thank you. Greg?
One thing I want to note, sadly, just before Christmas, an august member of the great generation died here in Cape Elizabeth, Dick Dahlbeck. Dick was 82. He had lived in Cape Elizabeth many years, and he served on the town council during one term, '92 to '95. His presence in Cape and the community and his church, St. Albans, was very notable because Dick had a really strong dedication to public service, contributing to others and doing work for others. And I thought it'd be worthwhile highlighting some of this because I think he's sort of a role model for public involvement that we could all look to. He, at St. Albans, where this is where I knew Dick, he offered sage advice and reviewed our budgets with a sharp eye, but more importantly, in his leadership roles in the church, he supported many of the ministries right to the end this past summer, in fact. And Mike sent us a note describing Dick's involvement in town operations during his period on the town council. He was a major proponent of the principle of taking care of your heaviest roads, heaviest travel roads first. In other words, he took his responsibility for stewardship very seriously, and he took his responsibility to the broader community very seriously. Until I read Dick's obituary, I didn't appreciate how involved he was in the Portland area and the state. His contributions over the years are really numerous to mention, but some of them included being chairman of the Portland Chamber of Commerce. He was on the Board of United Way. He helped start Nansen College, which is now part of UNE. He was appointed by Governor Kernan to, as commissioner of the Maine Healthcare Finance Commission. He was a trustee of the Maine Municipal Association, property and casualty pool. He was on the Board of Camp Bishop Woods and Camp Owatka. Just a whole range of things. And his sort of final advice to all of us as he was near his death, as reported in the Press Herald, was that, one, try to do more with family and stay close; two, live productive, satisfied lives; and three, do things for others. And I think his life was a, really, a model of these things. Good for us to think about. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just wanted to read a little excerpt of a letter that was mailed to our town manager last week from Mr. Kennedy Lane. Dear Mike, year after year, your leadership team has done a tremendous job, sometimes in the face of significant budget constraints and other adverse conditions. A big part of the town's success is the exceptional skill and diligence of Robert Malley. Even after epic snowstorms, our roads are clear and potholes free, while other cities have a foot or more of snow on the roads, even in their downtowns. Way to go, Mike, for hiring and nurturing such outstanding talent for over a quarter of a century. That's great leadership. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Ken. Just thought that was a nice nod to all the people who work for, on behalf of our citizens for our town that often don't get recognized. So, this is an opportunity for citizens to speak to items that are not on the agenda, if there are any who wish to speak. No. Town manager?
Yes, thank you, Sarah. First, I just wanted to thank Frank for those comments. Dick was truly a wonderful person, and I think you captured him well. Thank you. Did want to mention two things. I see Greg Miles up here in the audience, our facilities director. One project we just completed this past month was the interior painting of the Portland Headlight Tower. And Greg had me go down some day last week, Friday maybe it was, with the contractor, who did it. And it was just amazing to see the change on the inside of that tower. Before, there was lead paint that was peeling, and it wasn't the safest place to go. And now, there's this beautiful coat of lightish yellow, I don't know what the color is, but that is the natural color that it has been for years and years, it should have been, on the whole inside of the tower. In addition, for those of you that have been there, the cast iron stairway was all painted. And it was just a tremendous effort, particularly by the contractor. It's not the easiest place to work in that tower. And it just, I think it's really important that we preserve our landmarks and one that, you know, was entrusted to us. And it's just a really nice project, and I look forward, maybe the council sometime soon, maybe when it's a little warmer, while having a chance to see the work that was done and maybe go up to the tower. It's a great place to take a few photos. So, anyway, and if anyone else, you know, in the community is really interested, we can arrange folks to look at that, but not in the short term because the paint is, with the humidity and other issues there, it's still drying, so we'd prefer wait a little bit on that. Secondly, I wanted to make mention, we got our annual workers' compensation bill, and one of the things Dick was involved in was helping to reform the workers' compensation system in the state. And when you get a workers' comp bill, it is based on the experience of the employees. How many losses do you have? How much lost time is there? Medical bills, et cetera, lawyers' bills, although not as much as they used to be. Anyway, we're in a Maine Municipal Association workers' comp pool, workers' compensation pool. And every year, in very late December, early January, we get our rates for the next year. And the rates fluctuate, you know, a little bit. But what's really more important in many respects is the experience modification, that portion of the bill that reflects your lost experience. And I think it was four years ago, we were at 1.22. We had had a couple of incidents with issues with return to work, which I won't go into. On the school side, they happened to be, but they could have been anywhere. And so we were paying 22% more than the rates would indicate. It's been dropping year by year, and last year was .88, and we just got the bill for this year, and it was .82. So, you know, that's tremendous progress. The other thing I really wanted to make reference in regard to that is that last year, the school department only had two lost time incidents the entire year. One of them was for less than $500, and the other one was something that happened very late in December, and they have a loss reserve on it that's more than it's going to be. But there were only two. On the municipal piece, involving municipal departments, there, through January 1st, there had not been a lost time incident for over two years. And, you know, when you think of workers' comp and the history of workers' comp in this state, that's pretty amazing. So that's good news, and I think it's a real credit to all of our employees for, you know, being careful when they work, to the department heads who helped oversee that. Although, I have to mention with all that, that we did have one lost time incident since January 1 involving the lifting of a patient. So, you know, that, I'm really pleased and appreciative of the employees and the department heads on that. Third thing I wanted to mention is that we started, thanks to the council's approval, on January 1, the rescue per diem folks, paramedics, being at the police station each day. And while the first few days were busy, we only had two calls over about four days. It is a seven-day-a-week thing, and this weekend, we had two, you know, serious medical issues. And in both cases, the rescue was on the road within a minute of the call. And, you know, I don't know ultimately the fates of the folks that were, you know, were involved in those incidents. But regardless, I think it's already making a difference, we believe, and definitely making a difference in the response time. And I think it was a really important action the council took a couple of months ago. So, thank you.
Great. Great, great. Thank you. Review of the minutes from December 12th, 2011. Anyone have a motion?
Move to approve?
Second. Any changes, corrections? All those in favor? Item 26, 2012 sewer rates. It's recommended that we set a public hearing for the proposed sewer user fees for Monday, February 13th at 7:00 right here in the town hall. Of note, for anyone interested, we will have a workshop, we'll review it at our workshop this coming Wednesday, the 11th, at 7:00 in the Jordan Conference Room. Is there a motion?
I move that we set a public hearing on the proposed sewer rates used, user fees for Monday, the 15th of February at 7:00 p.m.
13.
13, I'm sorry. At 7:00 p.m.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 27, property at 349 Ocean House Road, an easement. It's recommended that we approve an access and utility easement from 349 Ocean House Road in Cape Elizabeth, in the high school driveway, for a lump sum, with a lump sum payment of $5,000 to be credited to the school department. Is there a motion? Frank?
I move that we accept this recommendation for the easement with the collection of the $5,000. Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 28 has to do with a storage-based lease at the property at Fort Williams Park, building number 326. We're being asked to approve a lease of storage space at Fort Williams to the Behavioral Health Resources for $37 a month, and that same leasing is also choosing to exercise its option to lease, I'm sorry, on the existing lease to rent additional space in building 326. Total income from all tenants in the building is now $28,000 annually, with possibly one additional lease anticipated.
Yeah, I want to thank Greg for his work on this, and actually, Constance Jordan, the local resident, who is the principal in behavioral health resources today, called today specifically to note, and say appreciated working with Greg on this. Would like to indicate that the same leasing is also exercising its option existing lease. We've been told that they plan to exercise that option, but they haven't exercised it yet, so that'll be coming sometime, some months down the road. But it is anticipated that it'll happen in a few months.
And if they choose not to, is that space then open for someone else?
Yeah, they have a year's option, so within the year's period, they do have that ability. We're also, Greg is currently discussing with another tenant, the remaining space in the building that's not under option or lease.
Mike, the, or Sarah, the, it's $37 a month, so I'm trying to figure out where that number comes from.
It's storage area in the basement.
Okay, so it's nothing substantial?
No, no.
Okay.
But it all adds up.
I have a question, although we haven't had a motion. Why does that person get a whole year to make a decision? It seems like they could maybe decide faster.
You know, we were extremely appreciative of this particular tenant when, after the building was empty for two years, they were the first one to get it open and to, you know, show the potential of the building again. And it's interesting, as soon as they did that, we've had, what, three, four, five? In fact, if the one he's talking to now doesn't pan out, there's even another one that's starting to talk to Greg about it. So it was mainly a case of the first in. We wanted to get someone in there to really accommodate them, to get the building occupied again.
Frank?
Mike, I can well imagine there are many people or organizations in town that would love to rent storage space, and I'm curious, what parameters do we put around the availability of the space?
I, Greg looks like he wants to talk, so I'll defer to him. With the chance of chairman's permission.
Please.
In this particular space, the basement area is accessed from a doghouse entry out down the exterior of the building. So it was easy to be able to put that in for us to use. Not all space is available that way. So it was just, she needed some additional storage space, and it worked out real well for that.
How much space is this?
It's about 150 square feet.
And if someone wanted to rent just something like that, would they come to you and ask about it, or do you think this is sort of a one-off?
I've never had anybody ask me before. They get to beat their way through the cobwebs and spiders first, but.
Thank you.
Any other question for Greg?
I have a motion, if you're ready.
I'm ready.
I move that we approve a lease of storage space at Fort Williams Park to Behavioral Health Resources, Inc., for $37 per month.
I'll second. Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 29, Fort Williams Park Master Plan. It's recommended we set a public hearing on the proposed revisions to the Fort Williams Master Plan for Monday, February 13th at 7:00 in town hall. Do we have a motion? Thank you, Greg.
I move that the town council sent a public hearing on the proposed revisions to the Fort Williams Park Master Plan for Monday, February 13th, 2012, at 7:00 p.m. here at the Cape Elizabeth Town Hall. Seconded.
Any discussion?
Just a couple of comments about this. When the Fort Williams Advisory Commission started work on this, they were hopeful that they were going to get this done and get it to us by the end of the year, and they've accomplished that. And I, my hat's off to Bill Nickerson and the commission, but also a special thank you to John Mitchell and his team and Mitchell and Associates, because a lot of the work and a lot of the effort and energy that went on behind the scenes to get this finished product to us is really due to the.
And the council has a hard copy of the plan.
I like the caution. 37 megabytes here. Or your computer will seize up.
Any other discussion? I just want to note that this is another topic that we'll be discussing in our workshop this Wednesday night, for those interested. Okay, all those in favor? Item number 30, the Fort Williams Park 2012 Vendor Program. We're being asked to approve the 2012 Fort Williams Park Vendor Program, recommended by the Fort Williams Advisory Commission. I see some people in the audience who may or may not want to speak to this item. Okay. Okay.
If I may, Sarah, the folks in the audience, just introduce them, Carl and Sarah Sutton. They were the folks that ran the Maine-centric, I still call it, but Bite into Maine, was that the name of it? They were all Maine-type products up on the hill at the park, and very, very popular selection of items.
Got a motion?
Sure. I'll, I move that we approve the 2012 Fort Williams Park Vendor Program as recommended by the Fort Williams Advisory Commission.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Know what we made last year for income?
The income, it's about $10,000, $11,000 a year.
Thank you.
I think it's, Bob had indicated in a note that I asked for $14,000 revenue for this coming year.
He's projecting this coming year.
That's what he's projecting, yes.
It's a little bit more because of the, there's an additional site that's coming in, too.
Mike, do you want to say when the applications are due, or will there be a chance to tell that, say that later?
No.
Just say maybe by now?
I think it's, what, the 27th of this month? 26th? 26th of this month. And then they'll be reviewed by a committee consisting of Bill Brownell, Aaron Grady, Bob Malley, myself. Am I forgetting someone, Bill? Nope. We'll review them and then work with the vendors to get the program going for another year. We're trying to get started much earlier this year.
Great. Yeah.
Just the committee that Mike mentioned, I just want to encourage them to take advantage of their number-three criteria of using their judgment on the, how the appearance of the cart will enhance the enjoyment of the fort. I just know that was one of the issues that people commented a lot about this past year. And so if we could just keep that on the forefront of our minds when reviewing the applications.
I had an opportunity to visit these carts last summer and received a lot of positive comments from other visitors to the park. I thought they were terrific. I was just going to have a question for the town manager. Is the primary difference between last year and this year the addition of that site?
There are two differences. One is an addition of a site at the beach that is recommended, that has to sell an ice cream-type product, but then can propose whatever else they want to sell. And then the Suttons, who are on the top of the hill, it's proposed to move that to the other side of the main road, so it's not quite sticking out so much in the area where there's a handicap parking spot there and there's the old playground road. We're looking somewhere along there, wherever that best meets the customer needs. It's kind of, it's in that little corner, but it's not exactly defined.
Frank?
I'm wondering, Mike, we have any statistics about last year's success of the program, whether it's the number of customers over there, or anything that might highlight the success of the program and the profitability, that it might allow vendors to encourage, you know, as strong of bids as possible? I know we don't have financials on the vendors, but anything that might make it a more competitive bidding process.
We, anecdotally, you know, everyone said they did okay, they did well. We believe, but we're not sure that most of them are interested in coming back. One we spoke to that said, you know, it's not as profitable as everyone thinks that it is, but still would like to come back. But we don't have any exact statistics. I go back to what Dave Sherman said, you know, we had an awful lot of folks that just liked the fact that they were there and, you know, enjoyed their food selections and liked that it was an additional resource in the park.
Is one of the other differences that there's not going to be a split season this year? Does it look like the permits are for the major?
Anything else? All those in favor? Item 31, motor coach fee update. This is actually not a motion, just an update?
Well, it's an update, but I just, it's sort of a, I'm, you know, you propose fees a certain way, and this is sort of a notice that we're trying to work with the industry. And it's, and we continue to have meetings. We have another meeting tomorrow with the Trolley. We have a meeting with the Discover Portland tour thing, Jean McGurn's outfit, that different, the different folks will see at the different meetings. We had, the one that's featured here is for the cruise ships. We've had a meeting with Greg Gordon, and they've all been very good, everyone's been really helpful, very cooperative, and very much wants to work with us. And I just wanted to make sure, by putting this on the agenda, that we're not off track of what we're doing and the way that we're working, and that this, that you don't have a concern with this discount of the $5 if they bring in 100 buses or more per year. And it's a real key that they're willing to give us a certificate of insurance, listing the town as additional insured. That's a great addition to the plan. We really, we want to work to, as much as possible, to set up billing systems and to reduce the administration. One thing we are looking at, you know, Jean Gross will be heading up this, you know, as it evolves, more heavily involved as it gets started. But we're also looking at proposing, and we may do it fairly soon because we want it in place for the season, of having someone who's there during the prime season as a greeter, that is responsible for looking at the fees. But we want them more as a greeter, that they do a number of things. They explain the park, they, you know, do a little welcome. But most importantly is that they give people directions to the vendors in the park, as well as if they want a more substantial meal, that we'll give them directions to restaurants in Cape Elizabeth, a particular focus on Cape Elizabeth businesses. And we're calling them greeters, we're thinking of polo shirts and, you know, khakis and something like that. Just something that, again, it would be better having statistics if we have someone there all the time. And just increasing the hospitality is an opportunity. That's one of the issues that the motor coach industry had, is what added value are you giving us for this? And so we were looking at ways would give them added value, as well as give the entire park and the entire community added value. We think this greeter, greeter plan does that.
Is this $5 per bus per trip?
Yes.
Just for the public to understand, it says, "One specific opportunity is to offer a $5 discount to any vendor bringing in at least 100 buses per year and who agrees to provide the town a certificate of insurance, listing the town as an additional insured, and agrees to work together on monthly billings." That's the deal they're talking about. Frank?
Mike, during the period of time we were discussing this at council meetings, some people expressed concerns about the possibility of some buses canceling their trips to Cape Elizabeth. Have you detected any of that?
No, it's a woman by the name of Lynn Tillotson from the Portland Chamber of, great of Portland Convention of Visitors, we're going to get the right one. I went to a bus conference, and so there were a couple. She sent me back comments. She had prepared this nice brochure that explained the system, and there were a couple that were a little angry about it, but, you know, and, but, you know, one reason we structured this the way that, the questions were, can we pay in advance? Can, what added value is there? And, you know, some of these types of questions. There was an issue of fairness, how are you going to make sure that you're really collecting it from everyone? And that's where we came up with this greeter, greeter provision. But, yeah, there's been, you know, there's a bar, whether or not there'll be a bite, I'm not sure. But the main players, who include Jean McGurn, you know, the main tour connection, they got the name of the company, is I've had a very nice conversation with the Trolley folks who are coming in tomorrow, and with the cruise ships, you know, the relationship is very strong with them. And, you know, but one of the other things with cruise ships that we agreed is that the folks get on the cruise ships, they get on these buses, and they have their tour guide, they begin to develop a relationship with their tour guide, and then they arrive here, and they immediately get given to another tour guide inside the lighthouse. They've agreed, and we've agreed, that their tour guide from the bus, for those that have the museum tour, are going to continue and do the tour in the museum, rather than have our folks do it, which is another reason for this discount is, you know, and it's better for them because that rapport and relationships develop. And their guides have heard the museum presentation, you know, they hear it, you know, 15 times a season, so we have every confidence that they'll be able to do it in a very professional way.
Other comments? So we don't need to vote? It's just an update? Or do you want?
Just if you tell me I'm going in the wrong direction, I'll change things accordingly. Otherwise, we'll probably come back for an amendment to the original approval, once we have finished meeting with the core group.
I think there's a sense you're going in the right direction.
Yes.
Item number 32, capital stewardship plan. Is there a motion? Dave?
I move that we acknowledge receipt of the fiscal year 2013, okay, 2013 through 2022 capital stewardship plan.
Seconded.
Any comments?
Sorry, I got a little confused, but I realize now that Dave was correct.
That's this report that we currently have in front of us, and for any interested citizens, it's on the website and can be downloaded and looked at. All those in favor? Unanimous. Now is the second opportunity for citizens to discuss items that were not on our agenda. Seeing no one, move on. So the next three items, we, we're going to take an executive session, so I need, I guess I need a motion for that. Jessica?
I move that we enter into executive sessions for items 33, 2012, 34 through 2012, and 35, 2012 and 36, 2012. Four, sorry. Four, sorry.
In accordance with the indicated statutes.
Yes, thank you.
It has to be part of the motion.
Okay, in accordance with the indicated statutes.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
So, will we come back at all, Sarah?
Um.
We might have to.
We will. Out to vote.
Yeah, it looks that way.
We'll check back out.
Yeah, we'll go off the air, though, but we'll come back into public after we finish the executive sessions. Is that right?
I think to vote, yeah.
All right. Thank you. For you.
I see a person. Yes.
Yep.